Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Commissioner Reiner.
I'm here.
Excellent, and we will move on then to tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad.
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, we will consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and purchase card claims paid for the period ending August 28th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
And that item passes. Item six is the approval of the minutes from our August 25th, 2020 county board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Is there further discussion or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes are adopted. Next item on the agenda is Chair's remarks. I have no Chair's remarks for you today, so we'll move on to committee reports, and we'll start with the management committee report. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is to approve an additional one FTE emergency management coordinator position, grade 12. And this position currently has one FTE emergency management committer, the, I'm sorry, coordinator. The duties and responsibilities have increased, and the responsibilities of emergency management coordinator include responsible for organization of personnel, resources, and facilities in times of crisis. They coordinate the emergency management agency or organizations disaster assistance to organizations in development for their preparedness, response, and recovery plans. The emergency management coordinators pay close attention to both state and federal regulations in implementing them in a timely manner. The additional one FTE emergency management coordinator will be responsible for conducting tests, training, emergency service drills, and exercises with the public and local officials. And this is going to be funded with CARES Act early on, and then the EMPGS, I forgot what that acronym is, but, in 2021, and then it will be added to our budget permanently in 2022.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
That item passes.
The second item. I turned off my... The second item is a salary offer above the third quartile. The radio system coordinator position has been vacant because of, or since July, a person resigned. And this position maintains 2,500 mobile and portable radios used throughout the county. They are also responsible for the upkeep of towers, dispatch equipment, and alternate. This person oversees the day-to-day operations of the radio shop and the radio technicians.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move it.
Motion by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
And the last, last item is a resolution approving... I accidentally turned off my...
I can read it for you if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, I see. I got it. Approving, excuse me, adopting Resolution 2020 M3, a resolution approving the tentative agreement between the County of Anoka and Law Enforcement Labor Services. And I offered the resolution.
The resolution has been offered. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That item passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. The original agenda is all information.
Thank you, Commissioner West. We will move on to the transportation committee report. We had a meeting on August 31st in the Bunker Hills Activity Center in the Maple Room, where we came away with some action items for you today. First, in the Highway Division, the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing Anoka County to enter into a Minnesota Department of Transportation Cooperative Agreement with the city of Coon Rapids for the replacement of the existing traffic control signal systems at eastbound Trunk Highway 610 exit ramp terminal on Coon Rapids Boulevard. And I'll move that. Is there a second?
Second.
Actually, there's a motion and a second for a resolution that we could have just offered. We'll take the motion and the second.
Who was the second? Who was the second?
The second was from Commissioner West.
Okay, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I'm glad Joe's here. I just kind of was wondering, so we had a light there.
There is.
And we're replacing it because it's not functioning, or?
I think it's a system upgrade as far as maintenance, but I'll turn to Joe if there's a more succinct answer than that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. My name is Joe McPherson. I'm the Transportation Division Manager and County Engineer. So you're correct, there is an existing signal system there. It's just met the end of its life cycle, and so it needs to be replaced. Okay. And so we've been working on this for about two or three years now.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Yep.
I will comment that this is one interchange off of 610 into Coon Rapids that Coon Rapids desperately wants an all-way interchange instead of a, just an on-ramp. They want the full interchange, but seeing as that could not be done engineering-wise simply, they've moved their request over to East River Road.
Okay.
To have that full interchange built there, and we're actively working with them on that.
Yep.
This is that intersection at Coon Rapids Boulevard where advanced terrazzo is.
Okay.
Used to be a Shell station right there.
Yep, got it, thanks.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, the committee recommends approval of a award of contract to the lowest responsible bidder for the Anoka County construction project that is the installation of a traffic control signal system at the intersection of Radisson Road and Xylite Street Northeast and nearside signal heads and flashing yellow arrow improvements to the existing traffic control signal system at the intersection of Radisson Road and 101st Avenue Northeast in the city of Blaine. Is there a motion to approve?
I will move it.
Motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. For those that are familiar with this area, this is that large radius curve on Radisson Road, not too far from the airport, that there's a road that exits right off the middle of that turn, and that's where the stoplight is. That's what the nearsides signal actuators are. I'll let Joe explain this better, but this is the intersection that Blaine really wanted stoplights at, controls at, at Xylite, which is just to the west of where the curve is. So Joe, take it over and explain that much better.
All right, thanks, Mr. Chair. We'll try here. So as you see before you on the, on the screen, you've got the main signal, as the Chair had mentioned. Xylite and Radisson will be a new signal that we've worked on with the city. There'll be some additional improvements on both legs of the city street there, on the north and south side. And then, as the Chair mentioned, just to the east through the curve there, we're going to add what they call nearside signal heads. So for, if you can imagine this, for the westbound movement, as you're coming north on Radisson and you're, you're kind of veering to the left and heading west, their signal system is closer to you than the eastbound signal system heads. So what we do is when you have a curve like this, to add a little more sight distance and you can see the signal a little further ahead of time, we're actually going to add a rear-facing signal head for eastbound Radisson Road, if that, if that makes sense. I tried. I think what you had was probably just as good, but...
Well, I think, you know, when, when I thought long and hard about it, the simplest way to say it is we're going to put stoplights on the backside of stoplight heads facing the opposite way to get, to get a better sight line, sight distance. So at any rate, there is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
What question, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Gamache.
Sometimes, Joe, I'll see that where, and I'm not sure if we do it in Anoka County, but I've seen it in other places where there's a change in the intersection, the new lights, new stops, and whatever, and there'll be a sign posted a ways away saying, "An upgrade or a change has been made." Do we do that in Anoka County?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, that's a great point. We are going to do that with this signal. So anytime there's a traffic control change, there'll be advance warning signs, and we usually leave those out for a period of time so that the public can get used to it and acclimated to it. Good question.
Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, we'll move into the Transit Division. The committee recommends approval of Amendment Number Three to a Contract Agreement between Anoka County and the Metropolitan Council for Operation of Anoka County Traveler Transit Link Dialer ID Service. This amendment will extend the contract through April 30th of 2021 and will be retroactive to February 1st of 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Gamache, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
And that item passes. That does conclude my transportation committee report, and we will now turn to the Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee Chair Report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For informational purposes, attached is a timeline for the Anoka County 2021 Legislative Platform Development. The legislative session convenes Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. We do this every year. It lays out the deadlines of when we would like legislative platform items due. The Intergovernmental Committee will meet along, and all county board members will be invited to attend on November 5th. That is when we will discuss these items really in depth. So the schedule is there. Our staff in different departments are busy working on that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Next, we will turn to the Parks Committee Report, and Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Parks Committee met on Tuesday, September 1st, at Bunker Hills Activity Center. We had no county board action items. We did have a committee action item. The committee recommends the conversion of the park maintenance custodian position, one FTE, to a parkkeeper position, one FTE, and we're referring that on to the Management Committee for consideration. This was due to a retirement in the custodian position, so staff re-looked at it and had an idea that maybe upgrading this to a park, a parkkeeper position, changing it around a little bit was, was good timing in this consideration since we had a retirement. So we'll move that on to management and have Commissioner West's committee take a look at that and give us some great feedback and approval. Hopefully, we'll see what happens.
Commissioner Gamache, that happened this morning?
Oh.
And it was passed, it passed unanimously and will be sent to the Board for, for passage at its next meeting.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner West's committee. I guess I didn't have to add all that superlativeness about the great committee, because you guys already did it. Thank you. And that was all we had. We had a couple informational items. One of the things I wanted to mention, Jeff Perry, our Parks Director, and I took a tour of the Elm Creek Mountain Bike Trails a few Fridays ago. Had an enjoyable morning. It was still cool. It wasn't as hot as it was going to get during the day, but we took a nice tour around that facility to see what it was like as we begin to continue to move forward on, on the plans for building such a, such a park in our parks. And what we found out was that one of the things that they had done over there is, in talking with someone that was, that rides that, those trails all the time, was that it was actually built from scratch, the 20-acre area. They, they didn't use any old trails. They basically built their own, and it's very nice. It's, and what I noticed, there's a lot of signage that they used along the way to help people understand where the trails were going and, and what was coming up. There were not a lot of crossings of asphalt trails or of the main bike trails and walking trails, and that's one of the concerns that we've had, is that how do we keep these together and yet make them safe so that we don't have anybody coming together at, at higher speeds or things like that? So we learned a lot, and I think with the fact that we are hoping to use some of the same people that created that park to create our park in the future, we feel pretty good about that. So it was nice to see what one looks like, ride it, get used, try to get used to it, and understand exactly how it might function in, in our parks here in Anoka County. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. Well, that does conclude our committee reports, and we will now move on to Item Nine on the Agenda, which is the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act items, or CARES items. And Item Nine is to consider ratifying changes to the Anoka Business and Nonprofit Grant Relief Program Application Period and Criteria as presented at the September 1st, 2020 County Board Workshop. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there any discussion? I would just point out for the people listening that our grant period had expired, and we hadn't filled all our grant applications. We hadn't had enough grant applications to really use the money we set aside. So we are extending the time period in which businesses can apply. We also changed some of the grant criteria. For instance, a couple of simple items. First, you can have up to 50 FTE, Full Time Equivalent, employees. Before, it just said 50 employees. So there were a lot of people with part-time employees that equaled 55 or 60 and couldn't apply. Now they can. We also said that you no longer have to have been in business for a full year prior to COVID-19, just six months. So we loosened that up as well. And a couple other things, but all of it was in an effort to get this money into the hands of businesses and nonprofits in Anoka County more quickly. So please get in, get on the website, and apply for those grant dollars. It's been brought to my attention that some businesses are concerned about the amount of paperwork they're being asked to submit. It should be important to point out that it's the exact same amount of paperwork you submit for any grant application, whether it's at the state or federal. The difference is we're asking for it very early in the process, not after the grant is given. We're just making sure, we're dotting the i and crossing the t ahead of time to make sure that we don't have to come back and ask for the money back when you don't actually have the documents. So get together your, and it's not that onerous. It's pretty straightforward, and from what I understand, I've not applied, nor do I intend to, but I have looked at the application process, and it looks, it looks pretty straightforward and reasonable. So do get those applications in. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, I would just like to comment on the Board's decision to move from one year in business to six months in business. It seems maybe a little bit aggressive to some people. But in my district, for example, there's an Italian restaurant that, you know, was getting up and going and spending money. It's incredibly expensive to build out these facilities, and then, you know, COVID hit, so then they didn't open. They recently did open, but here's an example of somebody that had a lot of out-of-pocket and then had much downside. And so having experienced myself, you know, I owned 11 retail outlets when I was in my twenties, before gray hair. It's very expensive and takes a lot of expense to get, get these things up and running. And so this is an example, and I think, Scott, you had an example too, when we discussed this at our workshop, that another business that, similar, only in business six months, hit by COVID, very damaged, and, you know, now they can apply too, so.
Yes, and I will say, the reason for the initial application called for 12 months is because we want to make sure there's no fraud. We didn't want somebody creating a business just to get the grant money that never really existed. We wanted to make sure they were a foundational, solid business that was, that was, had a year's worth of documents to show that they were in business. But we think we can do that with six months. We think we can show six months' worth of documents proving that they were well-intentioned in business and that they had a shot at making it before COVID hit, and so now our grant can help save them. And that's the plan, get this money in their hands. So thank you for comments, Commissioner Reiner. Further discussion? Although, this is a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry, it is not. This is, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Next, in the local government category, Item 10, we'll consider approving purchasing four UVC light disinfecting units from Skytron in the amount of $154,748 plus any delivery costs for COVID-19 disinfection and sanitation in the four county correctional facilities. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Are there any questions for Cory or discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, Item 11, consider approving purchasing 12 additional Wi-Fi access points in the amount of $20,745, $12,979 to CDW for hardware, and $7,766 to Allstate for cabling to improve Wi-Fi coverage and capability on the Juvenile Center campus in Lino Lakes to ensure residents and staff are safe from COVID-19 exposure during, during remote court hearings and family visits. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad.
Second.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next, Item 12, we'll consider approving purchasing two portable Full Matrix changeable message trailers for the Transportation Division from Street Smart in the amount of $38,708 plus any delivery fees to allow flexibility in trailer placement for COVID-19-related activities. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Gamache. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
That item passes. We'll move on to Item 13. Consider approving the following for county libraries to provide book lockers, to pick up books and holds to reduce capacity issues, allow vulnerable patrons to avoid entering the building, and extending service hours when buildings are closed. First, to purchase $209,802 for lockers with Smart Cart, which includes installation and technology, and an amount not to exceed $25,000 for internal reimbursement of virtual server space, and a contingency of $16,000 for other unforeseen costs associated with this implementation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Reiner, and second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
That item passes. We'll move on to Item 14. Consider approving purchasing COVID-19 barrier shields in the amount of $9,977.28 from Laird Plastics for the county libraries to provide barriers between computers available to the public at the reference desk. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, part of that action request, I believe, is listed also the approving $16,433. I believe it's bundled together. I think the only thing that was mentioned was the $9,977.
Yeah, I have them listed as two separate action items.
Oh, you do, okay. I apologize.
So let's go ahead and, and we've got a motion and a second on the floor for Item 14. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gahmash.
Aye.
That item passes. Now we'll move on to Item 15. Consider approving purchasing COVID-19 barrier shields in an amount up to $16,433 for the Economic Assistance Department Call Center from Alternative Business Furniture Incorporated to extend the call center wall heights. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gahmash. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gahmash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
That item passes. Item 16, consider approving purchasing the following hardware and software in the amount of $2,146,617 from in-site public sector. Server hardware and contingency for $809,291. End-user software for $929,326. And end-user devices for $408, $800,000. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gahmash. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if.
Commissioner Gahmash.
We shouldn't allow Corey to give a little more detail on the larger expense?
Certainly, yes. We did hear this at our IT Committee. We heard quite a bit about it, but you're right, perhaps the rest of the Board or the public would like to know a little bit more, so we'll turn to Corey.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Corey Camp. I'm the Finance and Central Services Division Manager. So I'll give a very brief overview of this. What this is for is what's called virtualized desktop infrastructure, or VDI, as people know. And so this is a more secure and safe way for many of our staff to access into our system, whether they're doing it remotely or mobile, which we've deployed well over 1,000 people due to COVID-19. So it's going to allow us to continue that process and to provide the tools for people from working at home, as well as people within providing the proper tools in order to make access to our systems and be able to provide services to people.
Thank you, Corey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gahmash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, Item 17, consider approving the following expenditures to expand the 911 Emergency Communications Center to allow for social distancing. We'll start at the top. $657,688.89 for the purchase of a voice logger, in parentheses, N-I-C-E. I'm assuming that's a brand, not that it's just nice to have. Second, $604,413 for purchase of a voice logger redundancy and radio consoles from Motorola. $95,435 for purchase of phone positions from IES. $85,000 for the purchase of console furniture from X-Bix. $16,693 for purchase of monitors, desktop PCs from Dell. And $4,576 for cabling services from Allstate, and $13,000 as a contingency for any unforeseen expenses within that buildup. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Brassad.
Just, this seems like a lot of money, but the space that 911 emergency uses is very small and tight. So what this will do is it'll allow a fully functioning dispatch center to be put into the training room. So it's really important to be able to get some social distancing down there.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte. Commissioner Gahmash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
That item passes. Next, we'll move to our Safety Net category. Item 18, consider approving providing $521,093.24 in relief to nonprofits as designated below for service expansion to citizens of the county that have been affected by COVID-19 health pandemic. I will list the nonprofits and the amounts and the service expansion. Alexander House, $35,775 for basic need support. Impact Services, $90,000 for Meals on Wheels expansion. And ACAP, $200,000 for rental assistance. Salvation Army, $121,000 for rental assistance. Lee Carlson Center, $16,400 for client assistance. North Suburban Counseling, $6,600 for telehealth services. Radius Health, $8,000 for telehealth services. Touchstone Mental Health, $7,400 for residential treatment services, client support. Centennial Community Network, $3,000 for early childhood family support. Youth First, $10,818 for distance hybrid learning support. And the YMCA for $22,100 for distance learning childcare support. Again, these have to be expanded services. This can't be something they were normally doing. This has to be an expansion of what they did because of COVID-19. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reiner. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Gahmash, then Reiner.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question here. In the background, it says we have allocated $3 million as a safety net, and this is a total of $521,093. Does that mean we still have that amount left, whatever the difference is, 2.5 million left, or has there been other things that have gone into the safety net already?
No, it would mean that we have 2.5 million left to put out in this category, should they come up with expanded services, which we are imploring all of them to do. Expand your services so we can help people that need help, and we will get the money to you to cover that cost.
Thank you.
Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, I should question this, maybe the county attorney. I sit on Youth First, so I don't know if I should move this or not. I don't benefit financially from it at all, but seeing as I'm a board member, it may not be appropriate to move it.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Look, you can move it. You just can't move on if you still have a vote.
Okay, so I'll abstain when the vote comes around.
All right. So we still have a motion? So we will have two abstentions on this vote. One from ACAP and one from Youth First. And I don't see stepping stone here, so I think you're okay, Commissioner Gahmash? And you're not on Lee Carlson Center Board anymore. Commissioner Reiner?
Yeah, so I just want to comment, it's, you know, these are nonprofits. They all do very good things in our county, but there is some, you know, sensitivity to public dollars going to nonprofits. I know we always watch that in Lino Lakes, you know, you want to help out, but there has to be, you know, some good explanation for why you're giving dollars to a nonprofit typically. And there's certain thresholds that need to be made. I understand that, you know, the thresholds here are that, you know, they are caused by COVID, and they're getting COVID dollars, and so that would be the threshold. And I guess I just wanted to reiterate that point, and so those watching and that watch this point of tax dollars going to nonprofits. Not that it's dollars that are typically, you know, wasted or going to a bad cause. It's just that you can't overly take tax dollars and feed them to nonprofits because it becomes a problem. And so in this case, though, it's for expansion of services that they were already doing, and it's for additional costs that were for, and caused by COVID. And then these are COVID dollars too, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. And these are directed by the federal government to us to spend in this category, if I recall correctly. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, and we will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Gahmash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Epstein.
And that item passes. And I believe that concludes our agenda. Is there anything else to come before the County Board? Attorney Blumbo?
Okay, members of the Board, just informational purpose, for the next three days, Bunker Hills Activity Center has been turned into a courtroom. So we are disposing of over 250 cases, lower-level drug cases, out of Bunker Hills over the next three days. Just an FYI for the Board and for members of the public. So we're doing our best, obviously, to socially distance, as well as trying to clear up some of the backlog that we're facing because of the current state of affairs. So just an FYI, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Attorney Blumbo. Anything else to come before the Board? Seeing none, we are adjourned.